Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to Pitts County Board of Supervisors meeting tonight at 7:00 PM Tuesday, April 16, 2019, Pitts County General District courtroom, Edwin R. Shields, Courthouse Edition 11, Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia, 2445-531. Called to order, please. 7:00 PM. I would like to welcome Mr. Rogers, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Vic Ingram, and Sheriff Mike Taylor for being here tonight, as well as all of you that are our special guests. Thank you for being here tonight. Roll call, madam.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Present. I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you will, those who can't stand, please leave the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask all board members, if you would, to make sure your mics are cut on. I would ask the board, are there any changes that are to be made to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few changes here. I'd like to add item 11D, Sheriff's Department appropriation to the agenda, and item 11E, approval of ODAF's intent to apply for $255,000 of tobacco allocation funds.
Hi there. Welcome to the committee.
All right.
And to delete item 7K, CVFD rental agreement from the agenda due to further consideration needed.
All right.
I'd like to make all these into one formal motion for change to the agenda.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Mr. Blackstock for these changes. This is three changes. We have a second by Mr. Barber. Do we have any discussion from the board? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Unanimous decision. Seven carries. Moving on to item six, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a second by Mr. Warren on the approval of the agenda. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, consent agenda. Change with the motion, we approve the consent agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Barber.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Blackstock. Do we have any further discussion on the consent agenda?
Just to remind everybody that item K has been removed.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Vote carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Scares?
Okay. I have a quick presentation for Karen Johnston. If you could come forward, please.
Probably need all the board.
Yeah, so everyone wants to come down. I hear you hurt this afternoon, so I had to bring you here. Glad you did.
Yeah, just a little bump in the way.
Now, for proper reasons, this is our donation to the Dambler Cancer.
Well, good. I'm glad it's false. There's more coming.
But since the president of the Association wanted me to do a resolution offering Karen, and I just, knowing being a cancer survivor like you, I knew it was an important thing to recognize you for all the hard work, so I wanted to read this resolution. I don't know if you knew about it, but...
I did not, but I'm happy. But it shouldn't be just for me. It should be for all the volunteers.
Well, that's true, but when you're a star at doing it, you deserve some recognition. I had no problem recommending you in the program. Pitts County Board of Supervisors Resolution honoring Karen Johnston, number 2019-4-03, whereas Karen Johnston has always been a strong supporter of charities that help those afflicted with various diseases and disorders, and whereas after losing multiple friends and even loved ones to cancer, Karen Johnston decided to make contributions to various cancer research groups and charities, and even grew her hair longer in order to donate an 11-inch ponytail to the Lots of Love Organization in 2009. And whereas despite her efforts to take care of herself and stay healthy, in 2008 Karen was diagnosed with cancer. Throughout her battle, she was inspired by the kindness of those who took excellent care of her. Due to this, she felt led to step up and do something to help those going through the same battle, but who may be less fortunate. And whereas Karen became a member of the Dambler Pitts County Cancer Board in January 2010, and whereas 10 years ago Karen followed her dream of organizing a health event called Bridge to Bridge, the raise funds for Dambler Pitts County Cancer. Excuse me, Dambler Pitts County Cancer. And whereas since its inception, her efforts have raised over $400,000 for Dambler Pitts County Cancer Association. And whereas, since over 1.7 million cancer cases will be diagnosed in the United States this year, increased access to quality cancer care, screening, and prevention, especially among minorities and medically undeserved, must be a top priority in our community. And whereas Karen is a cancer survivor and has shown extreme perseverance through her battle and continues to pursue her desire to help other cancer survivors, then be it resolved that the Pitts County Board of Supervisors expresses its sincere admiration and appreciation to Karen Johnston for her outstanding efforts in Dambler, Pitts County area. Given under my hand, the 16th day of April, 2019, Joe B. Davis, chairman.
Yeah. Thank you. You have any questions?
Yeah. We all have.
It took a professional to get that done. Thanks, man. Cut your pants off.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yes, I would love to say the words. I love to talk. First of all, I want to say thank you for doing this for me, but it's not just for me. It's for all the people who volunteered to help us and make this happen. It's very dear to my heart because I saw so many people when I was in the chemo lab who didn't have any family and they didn't have any funds to even come in to the Dambler Hospital at that time, the Dambler Regional Center, to be able to get transportation to take the chemo. So it's very dear to me because I see where this money's going. I see what a great job the Dambler Pitts County Cancer Association is doing, and that's an in and out community, not just in the city, but in the Pitts County. We all know someone that's been touched by cancer, and I think that we all have gifts and talents, and I think it's our part, living in this community, that we make life better for others. And so I feel honored to be a part of this, but I didn't do this by myself. There isn't any way I could have done this. By the grace of God and with all the volunteers that helped me, this is why it's a success. And I say this from my heart because I know it's the truth, and I ask you to get on board with us April the 4th in 2020 as the next race. We need lots of volunteers. We need sponsors, and we need your help and your support. It's a fun time. It brings families together. It brings loved ones that haven't seen one another for quite some time. So we are making a difference, and that's what it's all about. All of us coming together. This year alone, we had over 655 people who registered. If the weather had have been better, we'd have had over 850 people. So come and do this and be a part of the community and make it happen. Don't just talk about it, but be there and be a supporter of it, be a cheerleader, and donate to it. Just like I said, I hope more than this dollar's coming, so they need your money. And please, I ask you to deeply think about it and support this fund because they need it, they really do. So thank you so much. I feel honored. I did not know this was happening, but I feel honored. But this is not just for Karen Johnston. It's for all the volunteers who helped us together. Thank you.
Ms. Harris, welcome to the board. I have a proclamation to read and present to you. It says, "Pitts County Board of Supervisors, National Service Recognition Day proclamation. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of their American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's communities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. AmeriCorp's members and volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our communities from educating students for jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families. And whereas national service expands economic opportunities by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities to those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorp's members and volunteers serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations, or are very vital to our economic and social well-being. Whereas national service participants increase the impact of organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. National service represents a unique public and private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen communities and impact the increase of return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive community service a commitment that marines in future endeavors. The Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, and the Cities of Service, local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April the 2nd of 2019. Therefore, be it resolved that the Pitts County Board of Supervisors proclaim April the 2nd of 2019 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourages residents to recognize the positive impact of national service within our home community, to thank those who serve, and also to find ways to give back." Given under my hand, Joe B. Davis, Chairman, Pitts County Board of Supervisors. Thank you. Do you have any?
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to say it's an honor to be here this evening with you. My name is Audia Harris, and I am the AmeriCorp Program Coordinator hired by the Institute for Vaccine Research in Danville, Virginia. The AmeriCorp Program started in the year 2015, and I was actually one of the first members to serve that year. I am an AmeriCorp alum. I served here in Pitts County at the STEM Academy and the Regional Alternative School under the supervision of Dambler Power. Currently, we have approximately 40 AmeriCorp members that serve in different localities, including Dambler City, Pitts County, Monsville, Halifax, and South Boston. Our Dan River Year Program, they focus on STEM literacy within the school system, so they work closely in the classrooms to tune in to our students. We also have a Serve IT program that was awarded to us this year through a grant, and those students, those AmeriCorp members, they shadow professionals in the IT field, so they receive the tickets from the school system. And those members focus on information technology and computer science. So we are the AmeriCorp Program. We love to serve in our community. We love to have an impact on the lives of others, and our motto is to get things done. Again, thank you so much. It's an honor. Thank you.
Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board as a body during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that is signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting, absent chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. Our first guest is Carol L. Cooper.
Members, I represent Carol Cooper. My firm does. My name is Brent Shelton. She's going to reserve her time at this point until a public hearing is set. She's got a matter of business that's later down the agenda, so at this time she will reserve any comment. Thank you.
Now we go to public hearings for the rezoning. Pursuant to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pitts County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of Pitts County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these goals, that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pitts County, its citizens, and its posterity. I would like to open case one at 7:20. Sides?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case one, that's R-19-012. Randy and Nikki Owen have petitioned to rezone 15.590 acres located on Meadowview Drive and on River Ridge Road in the Westover Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District for agricultural purposes, specifically planting and growing pan trees for future harvest. Once the property is rezoned to A1, then all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted use. I will note with the exception that there is a proffer or two proffers offered with this case that are in your packet, and I will mention in the future. The planning commission with opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request with the proffer conditions as follows. Number one, if sold, the petitioner will request to rezone the property back to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District. And number two, no manufactured housing will be allowed. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and I'll note that the planning commission approved and recommended this case based on a seven to one vote. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Owen is here to represent his petition.
Yes, sir. Mr. Owen, would you like to step forward and give any statements?
I have nothing further to offer, Mr. Owen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any others that would like to speak that did not sign up to speak?
Yeah, I don't believe anyone signed up.
Thank you. All right. I close this hearing at 7:21. Pleasure of the board. Mr. Scares?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that the board approves case R-19-012 to change 15.59 acres from R1 to A1 with the addition of the two proffers that have been added to the application.
Second. All right. I have a motion by Mr. Scares, and I have a second by Mr. Warren. Is there any further discussion on this particular case? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
It passes unanimously. Seven. Your property has been rezoned, Mr. Owen, and we would love for you to stay, but you don't have to stay. You can go, but that's your choice. So we like to make that public because sometimes people think, well, I've got to stay the whole boring meeting, and so...
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a quick comment before they leave. I hope this will settle down a lot of the angst that you've gone through for the last few months and give you opportunity. I know a lot of the neighbors out there are great people and take it, you know, all the angst you had to go through. I hope this will smooth all that out, and you guys will take the opportunity to come together. It's good neighborhood out there, and I think you'll enjoy it, so I appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next case. I open that case at 7:23. Mr. Sides?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case two is R-19-013. Henry Lindwood Reynolds has petitioned to rezone 3.46 acres located off Highway 41 Franklin Turnpike in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to make the zoning consistent with the adjacent farm. Once the property is rezoned to A1 and all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted uses, the planning commission with no opposition recommended granting the petitioner's request by an eight to zero vote. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Reynolds is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. Mr. Reynolds, would you like to step forward and give anything?
Nothing.
No, sir?
Nothing.
Thank you. I close this hearing at 7:24. Mr. Barber?
Mr. Chairman, case R-19-013, I'd like to make a motion. We rezone this property from R1 to A1.
Second.
All right. Mr. Barber makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Is there any further comment or discussion?
Hold on.
Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries. Seven. Unanimous. And Mr. Reynolds, your property has been rezoned. We have item B of other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district, and his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmative given to extend the speakers allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. Mr. Sides? Do I open? Excuse me. Do I open this public hearing? Is this... Okay. I open this public hearing at 7:25. Mr. Sides?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as far as background information before we open up for public comment, the board may remember that representatives from Appalachian Power, American Electric Power, came and spoke to the board about the fact that they are running electrical transmission line service to the Berry Hill Megasite, and part of the requirements that they are dealing with is what is the proper permitting process to follow. There is an option for them to go to the State Corporation Commission for permitting and bypass the localities altogether, but that is a little bit time-consuming and bureaucratic. If they were required to follow the special use permit process, then they would have to get a special use permit on each parcel that this pipeline crosses or this transmission line crosses. So that was burdensome, too, and doesn't seem to further the mission of the county. So we discussed a potential revision to the zoning ordinance that addresses exemptions for projects of this type that are a little bit unique. And proposed language came out of the work session and discussions with the Board of Supervisors, and that language has been properly advertised to the public in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks. That language is in your packet, but I'll call your attention to it would be an amendment to Section 35-50 of the Pitts County Zoning Ordinance, which deals with exemptions. And an added language would say, "The following structures and uses shall be exempt from the regulations of this ordinance. The new number four will be electrical transmission lines sized 138 KV or less constructed to serve a properly zoned industrial park shall be exempt from this zoning ordinance with approval subject to a public hearing and vote by the Board of Supervisors." So we feel like this is a compromise that allows the public to speak. It allows the board to be able to vote on this issue, but it doesn't subject them to a burdensome, time-consuming process. So that is the proposed amendment, and, Mr. Chairman, I'll let you open it for public comments.
I need to check with the county attorney. Is there anything that you wanted to say on this particular subject?
No, sir. This is exactly what we went over at the work session last morning.
Okay. So I need to close this?
Oh, well, you opened it for public comment, I think.
Okay. Well, no one has signed up for public comment that I have.
Okay.
So there's nothing...
You may want to ask if anybody would...
Anybody would like to address this particular issue?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to Pitts County Code, Section 35-50 of the County's zoning ordinance, exempting electrical transmission lines as presented.
Okay. Hold on. I need to close this.
Before we both just close it?
Yeah, that's what I was going to do. Thank you. I close this particular public hearing at 7:29. And can I go with the motion already made? Yes. There's been a motion by Mr. Warren. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sides, is this for this particular project only, or is this from now? Because that's a question posed to me.
Well, it's not specific to the Southern Virginia Megasite at Berry Hill, but it is uniquely structured. It has to be a transmission line to a properly zoned industrial park. It cannot be just a transmission line to serve a residential subdivision. It cannot be lines, you know, below or outside of this category. So it's fairly specific, although we don't want to limit it specifically to that part because we may have a similar situation at the Stan River Megasite Park.
Only other concern I had to add some calls about this. Have they designed a route yet with this particular...
To my understanding, it's not been finalized at this point. They are still in the negotiating stage.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Vote passes unanimously. Thank you. Number 11, new business, request for a public hearing. All controlled area, and that goes to Mr. Cluster.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. County staff received a petition from Ms. Carol Cooper. She's a resident of Muswell Road in the county, requesting the board to consider amending Pitts County Code 2.2-22. Pennsylvania County Code two point two dash twenty-two, running at large restrictions in designated areas to include sections of Muswell Road and Anderson Mill Road. Ms. Cooper has developed a petition supporting adult controlled area defined as eleven twenty-eight Muswell Road to thirteen forty-eight Muswell Road and from twelve six twenty Anderson Mill Road to Burton Lake Road. County staff has verified there are twenty-six property owners within this area, and our petition has sixteen signatures, which represents sixty-one point five percent of the property owners in the proposed dog controlled area, requesting a public hearing for citizen input on amending PCC two point two dash twenty-two to include dimensioned sections of Muswell Road and Anderson Mill Road. County staff recommends setting a public hearing for citizen input to be held at the board's business meeting on Tuesday, May the fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize county staff to advertise a public hearing for a proposed amendment to Pennsylvania County Code two point two dash two-two to include the aforementioned sections of Muswell Road and Anderson Mill Road.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Farmer and a second by Mr. Blackstock. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to add that, you know, I commend Ms. Cooper, the legislative committee and all this board. We've been working towards trying to create a resolution that will help with the nuisance that county has been involved with our dogs. However, she's taken upon herself to do the legwork to get this, the signatures and the public hearing, so I commend her for that.
Thank you.
And I can verify that Ms. Cooper's been very persistent and adamant. And you know what? That's what democracy is about, and I think you should be commended for that.
And if Mr. Blackstock says that, I know Ms. Cooper, you've really bent some ears, so I understand. Thank you.
Them phones and straight stones were smoking.
Oh, yeah. Is any further discussion? All right. Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Item B, two thousand and nineteen Virginia Rule Summer Camp. Mr. Chairman, board members, excuse me. Harris Silverman is with me tonight. Harris oversees this project and has overseen this program for many years, so Harris can get into the weeds if he'd like him to, but I'm going to let Deputy Silverman talk to you about the program, the inception of the program, and some of the results that we've seen from.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Chairman, board members. Mr. Hunt, how are you all this evening? Good. We've been very fortunate that the board has, for the past four years, approved this reimbursable grant from the Attorney General's Office. More fortunate that the Virginia Attorney General, starting with Mr. McDonald when he was the Attorney General, envisioned this program that's carried through to Attorney General Herring, looking out for the children in the communities throughout Virginia. Very fortunate that the board has approved this. This will be going on our fifth season, fifth year, that we've had the privilege of being considered to accept this grant. The Virginia Rule Summer Camp is targeted towards at-risk youth in Virginia communities. It's an accepted grant that is the brainstorm of the Attorney General's Office. The funding comes from the Attorney General's Office. We spend money upfront. They reimburse us up to a certain amount. In the four years that we've been so far, we have offered the opportunity to over two hundred and twenty children. We target rising eighth graders. We have seen in our statistics that the summer of seventh to eighth grade is when our kids get a little more leash from their parents and tend to get into that experimental stage. So, we've targeted rising eighth graders. We've opened it up to over two hundred children through, in the last four years, we've had a hundred and fifty, I think it's actually a hundred and fifty-three students that have attended, or the kids from our communities that have attended the camp. To date, out of the one fifty, we have one that has veered off the normality of growing up and chosen, for whatever reasons, there are a lot of social background in his family that we've come to identify, but we've had one that's actually crossed the border and got on the wrong side of the law. So, out of a hundred and fifty, we've had one. There were other identifying factors in this young person's life that kind of dictated which way he was going to go, and I don't think there's anything that any one of us could have done, including the external mentors from another agency that took this young man under their wing, and still we've lost him. But all in all, it's a great program that's benefited our children tremendously, and we're here today to ask that the board approve the reimbursable grant from the Attorney General's Office to go forward with our fifth annual Virginia Rule Summer Camp for the county
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Department to accept a reimbursable grant from the Attorney General's Office in the amount of five thousand dollars for the purpose of the two thousand and nineteen Virginia Rule Summer Camp. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a seconded by Mr. Farmer. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the extra efforts, the extra work that you do yourself in working with this program and the sheriff. Thank you for the entire department. It goes a long ways in helping those children and helping develop good citizens and certainly aids in what we're trying to be sure we have, which is a great school system and a strong school system. And just from a citizen stepping out of the board role for a second, I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, that five thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things to house one inmate in a local or state correctional facility, depends on the facility, but most of them average between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars a year per inmate. So, sounds like we're really getting out in front of this, and it's nice to have a sheriff and his department that are proactive. Thank you.
I would like to concur myself because I know these two and the sheriff as well as Mr. Silverman, both have a heart for the youth, and I've been over there just briefly at this particular facility, and those youth, they enjoy what they do. I mean, it's a lot of eagerness going on over there. By the way, that weight you've lost, Mr. Silverman, you look about ten years younger. Looking really good. I like your uniform and all. We finally found one that fit. So, we do thank you for the work you're doing, as well as our law enforcement that always do a great job for us. I do appreciate that. We already had a motion made and a second. No further discussion?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
And that carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Item C on New Business is Workforce Investment Board. Ms. Kimberly G. Van Der Heid.
The Workforce Investment Board recently notified us that they have, are helping with a grant that was applied for and received by the city of Martinsville, and it was received through the Department of Social Services at the Virginia state level, and it is for, it's a tenancy employment grant. And so, Martinsville will be utilizing the help of the West P Workforce Investment Board and the United Way to administer this grant. But since Pennsylvania County is fiscal agents for the WIB, it will have to run through our books because they'll incur those costs, and so we'll receive a check back from the city of Martinsville to reimburse the WIB board for doing those things for them as far as administering the grant. So, tonight, we're recommending that you all appropriate a total of two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cent to the WIB's two thousand and nineteen budget, and that is just the portion that pertains to WIB. It's not the United Way portion. So, that is what we are recommending tonight, and there is no local match for any of the monies that we receive for the Workforce Investment Board.
It's basically a pass through.
It's a pass through, and we're only involved because we are fiscal agents.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an appropriation to the WIB budget in the amount of twenty-one, two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents, as outlined in the attached budget document.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Warren and a seconded by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion?
Once again, want to echo that this is not local money. We're just the agent, so we're passing it through. Want to be really clear about that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
We had two add-ons. Eleven D, eleven D. Eleven D is the sheriff's appropriation.
Does the sheriff, has he left us?
He's right here.
All right.
Oh, no.
You didn't lose so much weight. I missed you, sheriff. Talking about a federal asset. Excuse me.
Where are we located at?
Eleven D. It's a add-on.
Yeah, okay, okay. Workforce Investment Board, pardon me, TA&amp;M, employment grant appropriation. Okay. Eleven D. Mr. Mike Taylor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We requested today to appropriate from our asset forfeiture program an amount of sixty thousand dollars, and that would be appropriated to our asset forfeiture line and the construction line in the two forty-two account. We've made some renovations at our properties on Tight Squeeze Road to include security fencing, internet connectivity, and security cameras. So, that work has been done. It's in the process of being done. Also, we're trying to enclose that fence with some material that will keep the view from the motoring public because that's where we house our, most of our vehicles that's impounded or used in crime. So, we were asking that money be appropriated from the asset forfeiture to the line item so we can encumber that money.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appropriate from the federal asset forfeiture seizure account sixty thousand dollars to line item two four two dash four dash zero three one seven one zero dash eight two one two zero zero.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a seconded by Mr. Barber. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to, I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, that this federal line is monies where, has been seized from the sale of property from drug dealers and other criminals and is being utilized locally through the good deeds of our local law enforcement, and I commend you for it. It saves the taxpayers, and we're getting things done.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Yes, sir, Mr. Warren. Thank you, Mr. Blackstock.
Mr. Chairman, I, again, thank you, Sheriff, for the great job you do. I just have one question. It's from Ms. Van Der Heid. I know you mentioned in the work session that there were some additional appropriations needed. Are they covered in this? You've worked on that? Okay. Thank you. Just want to make sure you're getting everything you want. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. You have your sixty thousand dollars, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor, didn't you say we had one more?
Yeah, eleven D. First, undeaths intent to apply tobacco.
You want to take this one, Mr. Miller?
At a Economic Development Committee meeting a few weeks ago and again this evening at the board's work session, there was presented a request by the Old Dominion Agriculture Foundation to be endorsed, to seek Tobacco Commission allocation funding of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for property acquisition matters at the Old Dominion Agricultural Center on Highway twenty-nine. The Economic Development Committee recommended approval or endorsing this action and also made available to assist the foundation with a, the backing of a privately placed loan, if necessary, to secure the match. Our conversations with the foundation indicate that that's not necessary at this time. So, this evening, what you're asked, what we're asking you to do is endorse the Ag Foundation's application for two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the Tobacco Commission South Side allocation for Pennsylvania County.
Mr. Chairman, I move.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that.
Mr. Blackstock had you, so I'll.
Let Mr. Warren go. Yeah, I made enough motions tonight.
Mr. Chairman, from the Economic Development Committee, we recommend that we approve the application for a grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the tobacco allocation fund for the benefit of the Old Dominion Ag.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Warren. Second.
Land acquisition.
I'm going to take Mr. Blackstock, Mr. Barber, because y'all were right, neck and neck. So, we have a motion by Mr. Warren, a second by Mr. Blackstock on this grant. Is there any further discussion by any board members? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item twelve. I don't believe we have any matters from the work session, if any. Item A, Voting Precinct Relocation Public Hearing Authorization. Ms. Bayless, she's not here?
I'll take it. This was brought up at the work session today for everybody in the audience. Ms. Bayless is requesting the board authorize county staff to advertise a public hearing at the May Business Meeting here, assist input on a proposed revision to Pennsylvania County Code that would change the location of the Riceville precinct and a new facility in Mount Herman precinct. This is based on the Riceville precinct is because the church, which currently housed, no longer desires us to utilize that facility and the facility in Mount Herman, the Courtyard Hotel. They've notified us that there's a new tenant and the leasing agreement forbids us using for election purposes. So, county staff recommends the board make a motion to authorize it to hold a public hearing at the May Business Meeting here, assist input on the two voting precinct relocations that I just described.
Thank you. Most pleasure, the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we held a public hearing in regards to the change in the two voting precincts, as stated by our county registrar, Mrs. Bayless, early in the evening at the work session.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a seconded by Mr. Barber on the relocation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
Please cast your vote. All votes have been cast. I will now close the vote.
Vote carries unanimous for the next public hearing. Item fourteen, Board Member Reports. Mr. Barber.
I have none.
I have none.
Mr. Blackstock.
Yes, I'd just like to notify the board, and I think Mr. Hunt also received it. Chris Barber, who we recently appointed to the Department of Social Services Board, has submitted his resignation. Since Mr. Barber's appointment to the board, he and his wife have taken three children in to foster parent, acting as foster parents, and it's been a Commonwealth attorney's opinion rendered that if they take in anything over $5,000 in a 12-month period, it could be a conflict of interest. And true to Mr. Barber and his wife's background and loyalty, it wasn't a question. He said, "I'll step down off the board to help foster these kids." And so, it made me feel good about the person I appointed to the board, their heart's in the right place, and I'll seek another board member, and I wish Chris Barber and his wife, Carol, all the best in what they continue to do as foster parents, and they recently adopted a child, too, so just forever grateful for people like that in our community. But I'm sad that he has to step down off the Social Services Board, but I understand, and it certainly tells you that their priority's in the right place.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Farmer?
I'd just like to announce that May the 11th is gonna be an exciting time for the town of Gretna. At 9:00 a.m., we'll have our annual Gretna 5K race, followed by at 11:00 a.m., our strawberry wine festival.
Dr. Miller?
No, sir, I'm good.
Mr. Scars?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Think I would feel remiss if I didn't make a few comments following a rigorous budget process time again. I wanna thank Ms. Kim Vanderhyde for her hard work and her staff on the budget. It all comes together, and we get all the information and the numbers, and you're always working with us through that process, and it's very difficult. I'm very happy to say that a balanced budget this year without using unaside fund balance, which had become a common practice within the county. And I also wanna thank our treasurer, Ben Shorter, who brought it to our attention a couple of years ago in relationship to the supposed $34 million we had in general fund. In reality, we've all learned that a lot of that was pre-allocated money, so I wanna say those things, and I think the county is really hitting in a great direction. We're no longer borrowing money and paying interest only, which did occur for approximately, roughly 10 years. We're no longer balancing the budget by neglecting maintenance of our equipment and our buildings, and no longer only funding our school system at the bare minimums of the standard of quality. And I think we all should tip our hats to our school system for the great job they have done and been a first-rate school system with being on the low end of the spectrum of funding. It's just been amazing what they've been able to do, and I'm very proud of this board that they stepped up and allocated more money for those funds and stopped the bad practice that had occurred here for so long. We're no longer balancing the budget by neglecting our hard-working employees as we went for so many years with no pay raises for those folks that are giving of their time and effort in making this county, in my opinion, the best place in the state of Virginia to live and reside. So, I proudly serve those folks, and I appreciate them very much. I also wanna thank the entire staff for their efforts, in particular, over the last two years. It's not an easy job to do what you all have done in taking our budget out into the public and engaging and having more citizens engaged in that process, which has developed and been shown as much more transparent than we've ever been before, and I personally believe in transparency, and I think it's a great thing, and I think the citizens are appreciative of that, that they know a little more about what's going on. I also wanna thank our Finance Chairman, Ron Scars, for a job well done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would comment that I do appreciate the schools that we do have that are in place. I'm thankful for every school teacher. That makes not only a great effort, but a lot of sacrifice to keep our youth educated, and I think it's paying off as well. I do appreciate our staff. They are the worker bees for this county, simply put. I do wanna appreciate, I do appreciate the county administrator, who's done the toughest job probably of any county administrator thus far here, of getting the ship much tighter and hopefully with a few less leaks, so that we can enter into deep waters for overall expansion of the county, as well as new items and new things coming to our way for our youth and for posterity, because quite candidly, it's about our children and our children's children that we have to leave posterity for future generations, and I think at this particular time and junction in the history, as well as the overall beauty of Pennsylvania County, we're headed in the right direction. But still, I will offer the challenge to our staff, but we still got a long ways to go, a long ways to go. So, I wanna thank all of you. Thank you. That's all I have. Let's see, Mr. Smith, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, we do have a long way to go. One way that, one area that we are making great strides is at the Pennsylvania Pet Center under the leadership of Mr. James McLaughlin. We are engaged in numerous fundraising efforts. We have lower animal count in the center today than we've ever had before. He's employing creative practices to transfer animals out and increasing adoptions, so things are going extremely well. And I bring to your attention, on May 4th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., there will be a no-ferie flea market at the Pennsylvania Pet Center. So, we have a flea market, craft and food vendors, and for the first three hours, we will be doing low-cost rabies and micro-chipping of animals. Citizens will also be able to buy their county licenses for $5. That fee will be going up on July 1st to $10, only for non-spay or neutered animals. So, intact animals will go to $10 on July 1st, so this is an opportunity for those that don't yet have a license for the next year to get in before that fee is raised. We'll also be offering dog baths for $10, and we especially appreciate the veterinarians at the Chatham Animal Clinic and Cherrystone Veterinary Clinic for assisting us in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor?
I have nothing, thank you.
I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:59.